Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 24th meeting of the Rolling Hills City Council. I'd like to call you as you order. And could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Black, absent. Councilmember Derringer.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temmerch.
Here.
And Mayor Wilson.
Here. And would everyone please rise and pledge allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So, next on our agenda is a very special presentation honoring one of our residents, and I would like to turn it over to Councilmember Derringer to provide the introduction.
Yes, I'd be very happy to do so. We are delighted to make several presentations to one of our esteemed residents, Dr. Carmen Estrada Shea, who's with us this evening. And I am going to make a presentation, I believe our mayor's going to make it for behalf of this city with the certificate that was previously given from the city. But tonight I wanted to honor you as a woman of persistence, and that's an honor that we bestow each of the board members of the League of California Cities, of which I am a board member and a former past president. We get the opportunity to honor a woman of persistence in our community, and Carmen is certainly that. She has been persisting on behalf of women and uplifting women and encouraging women to excel and exceed their expectations, and I'm a recipient of that. She's definitely been a great mentor to me and always encouraging women to excel. And so, we want to honor you and also in light of your recent achievement in being selected by President Biden to represent the United States of America on the Fulbright Scholarship Board, which is a very esteemed scholarship that is, the United States provides scholarships to people all over the world in addition to residents of the United States of America. And so Carmen is out in about representing our country on behalf of the board and in talking to individuals about applying and reviewing applications for some very qualified people that there's so many more applications than they have the ability to grant scholarships for. So we are honored to honor you. And so I want to, I have a plaque and I want to present to you as the 2023 Woman of Persistence Honoree. And if we could maybe put it somewhere where we could take a picture and I'll take a picture and then maybe one of the also the other councilmembers. And then I know that our mayor wants to re-present the certificate. Oh, did you bring it, Carmen? Okay, maybe not. All right. Okay, that's fine. But anyway, so let's have a photo. I'm sure Jordan is ready or not. Maybe somebody. Okay, we've got some. And then just send me a copy so I can send it to our board. Anyway. Okay, this is yours. Okay, this is really such an honor. I really want to say how much I really, really thank the residents of the city of Rolling Hills who have contributed to my development. We've been residents here for 28 years and through living in this beautiful, beautiful home, in this beautiful nature, community, we have, I have expanded and learned so much and really been able to garner the spirit of freedom and the spirit of democracy. And so therefore, I really want to thank everybody for this opportunity to be a citizen of our community and to represent our community. As you know, that the Fulbright Foreign Scholarship Board is an appointment by the United States President, okay? And President Biden appointed me on November the 22nd as a member of this board. So with that, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what it is because a lot of people don't know what the Fulbright Board is. I don't believe there's ever been another resident of the Fulbright Board in Rolling Hills. So I'm the first woman and certainly the woman of Latina heritage that has been on this board and a proud resident of the city of Rolling Hills. So I will tell you a little bit about the board. Okay, the Fulbright Board was started by 1946 Senator William Fulbright. And Senator Fulbright was very interesting because he basically felt that after World War II and after the destruction of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, that there had to be a better way for us to create diplomacy and understanding. And with that, he knew that there was properties all over the world that had been used for war. And at that time, they were going to liquidate those properties. And in order, instead of them being liquidated for military, he thought, came up with the Fulbright Program, which was to create diplomacy. And through that, to offer opportunities to people who are students to be able to go and learn about other cultures and therefore through mutual understanding that they would be able to create a citizen diplomacy. And that is what the Fulbright Board is all about. It is the brightest and the best of our country, and also we get the brightest and the best of other countries. And so it's a, the whole goal is to establish mutual understanding and peaceful relations throughout the world. And it's a partnership with 140 countries throughout the world, and it offers opportunities in academic disciplines all over, everything from medicine, research, ecology, all kinds of science. And the pursuits are accomplished through college senior, New York graduate students, young professionals, and yes, even middle-aged and senior citizens have our participants in the Fulbright Board, especially with the Hubert Humphrey Scholarships. Next slide, please. In the past 75 years, Fulbright scholars have been appointed 62 Nobel Prizes, 80 Pulitzer Prizes, and he's become Presidents and Prime Ministers of Countries and also 300 MacArthur Fellows. So it is the most prestigious scholarship program in the world. When anyone says, "You're sent on the Fulbright Board," everybody listens. International peace is something that's very important because as we see this understanding that we have, we need to understand with regards to what are people thinking? How do they see the world? We are not the only ones. We don't live in an island. And we need to create people's understanding to understand us and for us to understand others. And what is the better medium? The best medium is through education. And as an academic, I am totally 100% for that. So with that, I want to say that I really, really, I'm, I am a employee of the State Department. I have a top security clearance. And so I am so honored to be this and have this position. I really, really am. And I think, the next slide, please. And in December, I was invited to a reception. And the reception was with, guess who? The President of the United States. And at the reception, at the White House, and I can't tell you the security, what it is like to go to the White House. You go through layers and layers of security just to get into the White House. Those of you that have been there know that. With some very, very nice people who are dressed with rifles and all kinds of artillery that are high-powered artillery, but they are the nicest people there. And with that, in the receiving line, I thanked President Biden for appointing me to the Fulbright Board. I told him I was a resident of the city of Rolling Hills, and he said, "Oh, that's really wonderful." And I said to him, "I was an academic." And he said, "You know Jill is an academic." Jill's his wife, of course. And I said, "Yes, I know." I said, "We're very proud that she is an academic." And then he said, I said, "Can I take a picture of you?" And what he said to me was, "We are going to take a picture." And he took the phone out of my hand and he took a picture of us. So I think that that really says something about an individual in that position and also about the respect for the Fulbright Board. So with that, I want to say thank you very much to the city who has contributed so much to me. Everyone, I want to introduce my husband that doesn't, they don't know, Gordon Shea.
I'm known as Plus One.
He now is known as Plus One. This is a picture in the White House and just the gallery is just amazing. When we got into the White House, and of course, you know, they see that we're not youngsters, the, you are immediately assigned a military escort. And the very first thing they saw my husband, because he's so young and vivacious, they asked him, "Do you want to use the elevator?" Because you have to go to steps to go to the state dining room. And basically, he said, "Oh, please." And he says, "Well, we have to clear it for you because the President may be there." So they had to clear the elevator so that we could use the elevator to go up three floors. So this is one of the portraits of the gallery, and ever since when I was in junior high school, President Kennedy died, and so I thought this was very appropriate. I never thought that I would be in the White House in this particular position. And so here I am. Thank you very much, and thank you for honoring me in so many ways. I also want to let you know that on March the 6th, the Fulbright Foreign Scholarship Board actually came to the city of Rolling Hills. And they were at a reception at our house. So the State Department was here, okay? And
How was the security?
It was, it is safe.
Happy day.
That's good. I don't know, I was so, so they worked it out. But anyway, it was really with university presidents from UCLA and Cal State Long Beach and everything. Our, like I said, we have contracts with a lot of schools around in the area and universities and colleges and universities, and we send the brightest and the best to other countries. But, and I just received a, an email that said that we have two students, two scholars in Sudan, okay? And that they are right now scurrying to try to get them out because of all of the upheaval in Sudan. So again, it's quite a bit of work, and it's a lot that we as individuals have to really say thank you for. And with this understanding that is being developed, I can tell you one thing. I have read over a thousand applications, and I read every single one of them. And, and last week, I was in Chicago and I met 150 of the students. And I can tell you that the students are incredible. And if I was to say that their areas of research go from everything from ecology, science, NASA, okay? I mean, just healthcare, just all kinds of interests that they have because they want to take back the knowledge that we have to share with them. But we are sitting there listening to their stories also. They were fascinating, absolutely fascinating. And, you know, Europe, Ireland, Hungary, I mean, just incredible. We have suspended right now Ukraine because of the war in Ukraine. But it was just an incredible experience. And I can say that the running current amongst all of them is humility. They are the most humble individuals, and yet they are scholars. When you read their applications and you look at their transcripts, they're all 4.0 or higher. So just want to let you know, that's who's representing our country and other countries in the world and vice versa, other countries representing us. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Carmen, Carmen, before you sit down, I just wanted to say a couple of words. First of all, I'm sorry I don't have the presentation from, from your home a few weeks ago, but I, when I heard about your appointment to this board, I was extremely happy for you, proud that, you know, you're a resident of our city. Also proud to serve on a county commission with you. We're both members of the Small Business Commission for the County of LA. But I didn't know that much about the Fulbright Scholarship Board, and I mentioned it to my daughter. Now, my daughter's a PhD candidate, UCLA. So as soon as I said that, she just blew up and, and said how, how excited she was, you know, what an honor it is to be part of that. And I learned more about it at that point. So not everybody knows what it is or what the board does, but certainly it's making the rounds here in Rolling Hills within my family as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much, okay? And I'm proud to represent our community. And everywhere I go, I tell them, "I'm a city of, I am a resident of the city of Rolling Hills."
And we're very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I brought some freshmen here to celebrate.
Mayor Wilson? Would you, would the council like a photo with Dr. Shea?
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Shea?
Yes.
Would you like a photo with the councilor?
Absolutely.
And also Mr. Plus One?
Why don't we take a five-minute break, and that'll give us an opportunity to take a photo and then indulge in the
Have some goodies?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Okay? When you're not standing here?
Sure. I'm tall. I'm Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation, and this is from SiteLogic, Potential Funding Sources and Implementation Pathway for City Energy and Resiliency Projects.
Mayor Wilson, I want to introduce Josh from SiteLogic. Josh has offered me some perspective on energy projects that's going on in LA County, and I thought that would be a good source of information for the city council to hear since we are going to be embarking on a solar battery system for standby generator for the City Hall campus. And so you just made that decision a meeting ago or maybe two meetings ago, I can't recall now, I think. Okay. And so I'm very excited to go on this. But funding and financing project is always kind of a topic here in Rolling Hills. And so I'm just trying to be creative and look at all sources to help out with the financing. Now Josh here is here free of charge as a city, so I didn't want the city council to have any questions as to whether if we're paying Josh's time tonight. It's definitely free education that Josh is offering. So Josh?
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, and the residents of City of Rolling Hills. I'm excited to here to educate you tonight on energy and resiliency program that I might see a benefit to the city of Rolling Hills. So my name is Josh Steber. I'm the Local Government Relations Executive for SiteLogic. SiteLogic, we are a nationwide licensed general contractor specializing in utility conservation, infrastructure enhancements, have wide variety sustainability programs for state and local governments. We are a different breed of a general contractor, though. We are credited all the way up through the Department of Energy, which there's 22 of its firms nationally that hold that. And I have a local team of just about a little over 100 employees here in this state, and our primary focus is strictly local governments in this state. We are a single source of accountability and responsibility. So meaning I'm here today talking about a vision, and I have this entire team behind me that's going to help make that vision move forward into hopefully an implementation. My agenda tonight's going to be just brief. At any time, please feel free to interrupt me. I do not leave a Q and A slide at the end, so just stop me, I'll stop talking. I'd be more than happy to address your comment. But just briefly, we're going to talk about what is, why are cities implementing energy programs? We'll focus more around this region. What are some of the city goals I could see here to do an energy program? Some of those energy measures, city manager discussed, solar, renewables, how does that all tie together? What are some of those funding opportunities? And if a city this size were to do one of those projects, what would the accomplishments from that program be? And I also kind of threw out just a preliminary roadmap if you wanted to see what, what this would look like. So at first, why are cities implementing energy programs? Well, every city is completely different, especially in Southern California, and each one has a wide variety of reasons why. I could probably name a couple that are similar. I think one we all agree because we're getting hit at our own homes is the cost of utilities. They're just skyrocketing year over year. We're not seeing any, any mediums coming. So where could the city might look to implement and invest into technologies that might be able to help save monies on those? Other reason cities are doing this is due to state mandates. We live in a state that's got a huge push towards electrification. Our firm doesn't believe that's the only thing. Again, every city's different, so we want to make sure you're getting exactly what the city needs at the end of the day. So there is that zero net energy that, that some go for, but others is just maybe looking at that conservative approach and how can they enhance and modernize their, modernization, modern, yeah, I said it right the first time, their communities. So my goal is to work on, on both sides, bring one vision together and make sure everything goes right and smoothly. And again, Torrance is going to be a lot different than Rolling Hills. Rolling Hills Estates is a lot different than Rolling Hills, and where I come from, Riverside County, is a little different. So the city goals, these are my city goals. These aren't yours, even though I did do some of my research online. But my, I myself also come from a gated city in Southern California. I live in Canyon Lake, which is in Riverside County. So I have a very strong relationship with my council and my staff, and I understand their challenges, their pain points, what keeps them up all night, but also what excites them every day to also keep being a servant to their community. And, and I think that number one, and I always keep as here is quality of life. You want the quality of life to be the same for everyone within here, and that's huge. And when we're starting to see energy efficiency coming into play, we're starting to see areas of quality of life diminishing in different. And so focusing on that quality of life, that's a priority of our program. As like I said, I'm also from a gated city. We're not a school district in the state, so we're challenged to do more with less. So seeing us forward-thinking, and that's why city manager brought me to the table, giving you another vision, another opinion on how to do a program like this. I think the biggest part of that conversation I think the biggest part of that conversation, though, that came from that conversation is how could, how could that program, what can we bring to the table to make this city as resilient for what the community needs at the end of the day? And, and, and I will share that solution here in a second, and then of course addressing that sustainability. State's on it, we're, we're everywhere, and there's, there's so many different ways to address sustainability, this is just one key factor of it. So what is a microgrid? And I'm going to give you the exact definition from Wikipedia and Google. A microgrid is a local electrical grid with defined electrical boundaries, boundaries, which pretty much is acting as its own island. It's made up of minimal three areas, solar photovoltaic panels, which is what generates the electricity. Now you're going to need to store that electricity, which would then go into a battery, a, a, a backup battery system. And then that backup battery system is tied into a microgrid controller, so when time is needed, it knows which critical loads to divert the energy. The one, number one misconception about solar that I had my first time when I was residential, putting it on, but even coming onto the commercial side of things, is if you were to just put solar in and tie it to the meter and the utility went off the, off, so is your power off. There was nowhere to store it, and there was nowhere to be able to use it again. So bringing this microgrid solution is just, it's a little more different than just putting up some solar and thinking we're going to save. There's, there's two parts to this. Again, one is how do we be as resilient for what our community needs at the end of the day? If it's turning this campus into an EOC site, if it's be able to have certain critical loads to be able-
What was that site you said?
An EOC. Emergency Operations Center. So don't know if this would be maybe one before a local school so you could gather more information, but again, how do we turn this campus into its own, own island if we're not here and could be supported by Edison at the end of the day? The other, and actually, I'll shift to that next slide, and, and energy storage. How is, how could energy storage complement also when we're looking at implementing EV charging infrastructure in here? As we all know, there's state mandates that no combustible engine vehicles would be able to be sold in the state by 2035. I wasn't waiting till then to get my car. I didn't buy my car for actually that reason. I enjoy my electric car, but one of my biggest problems I have in my electrical car is the infrastructure that is around. So we see a lot of cities are now starting to invest and deploy infrastructure, both for public access, and there's more of a revenue strategy there with them, but also their own, uh, uh, behind the gate asset. I know there's not too much here, so we're more focused on, on public infrastructure, a few charging stations out here. But that energy storage is, is great. I like to start with what the potential challenge. Could this be of energy storage with EV deployment out here? One is the limited capacity, or the number one would be limited capacity in two reasons. One, this parking lot does not need to be filled with charging stations everywhere, so limited capacity, there's only so many charging stations that would be available. Number two is those battery storages, even though they've come a long way, there's still almost so much hours of charge those hold, and I'm a pessimistic. I like looking at everything as the worst. So in the fall at 5:00 PM, when the sun just went down and all the power went out, it's going to be out for the next two days, we know we're not going to be able to have power till the sun comes up, which, you know, 11 hours from then. And having this battery storage, which is rated, right now, they're between 10 and 12 hours. They, they get better as every year goes by, but would there be enough adequate room to have enough storages, again, to now deploy electricity for what those critical loads would need at the end of the day? So that's the resiliency play. What happens when the power's on all the time majority of the year? What happens when we're not, we're not in a natural disaster majority time of the year? Well, that battery and that microgrid, my engineers would be also able to program it in more of a demand shift play now. So as the Southern California Edison a few years ago changed their time of use rate, times from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, that's where the city, that's where the homeowners, that's where you're getting hit hardest with the highest rate times from the utility. At that time, we can look at utilizing the, the battery to do a demand shift for the buildings or building, and/or the now increased load from what those EV chargers would be able to, with those EV chargers would increase. So now we're going to be shifting the electricity from the battery and be using it at the time that you would be paying at a higher rate, but the power that we generated for that battery, we generated it at a least, a cost, a least cost effective rate. So there's a strategy that's beyond technical than, than you and I here in this room, that my team of engineers will work with staff, staff to, to collaborate on again, what's the demand play, what's the resiliency play, and what's that critical play? So I've, I've talked to you about solar opportunity, battery energy storage opportunity, a microgrid, electrical vehicle infrastructure, and you're probably wondering, where do we get the money to be able to do this? Well, the great news is, is we're seeing these state mandates pushing government agencies closer and closer to it, especially through SB 100. There are a lot of funding opportunities that trickle down from the federal, state, and local levels. One tonight that I want to highlight because these, these incentives and grants and rebates do come and go, that the Inflation Reduction Act, which is a federal rebate, the Biden administration approved this at the end of last year, they're going to be funding over $27 billion towards projects just like this to local governments across the country. We understand state of California's going to get the bulk of it, and there's actually projects that are just starting to finally submit. It is a one-time payment back from the Treasury. As, as this agency and like all others do not have a tax appetite, there was really no tax incentive to be able to give local governments to be able to invest and implement these projects. But through the Inflation Reduction Act, this is giving the City of Rolling Hills right now a 30% base on the overall project costs. That includes labor as well. As long as the system, we can get it up and live, built and live by January 1st, 2025. So December 31st is the last day of submission. Again, whatever that project costs of the solar, of the battery, of the electric vehicle infrastructure, this is just one of the funding opportunity and sources that would be able to make huge contributions to this program. So what other accomplishments would this program have to offer? Again, one is showing that renewable gener- generation stewardship to your constituents behind me. Also, it's, it's hitting on that goal of what also City Manager is looking for, is how to take this campus and make it a resilient campus. This type of program in the state of California, we're, we're a little different. We have a government code that's been enacted in the early 80s, but this type of program could be contracted through that government code because we're seeing it bringing a cash flow year over year from what the current utility operation expenses are, which means we've already preliminary looked at some utility data here, ran some models, and just in year one, if a microgrid were to get installed from the generation of just the solar itself, there would be a, a, year one savings at, at minimal $7,000 from what your existing utility spend is currently at right now. And again, that Inflation Reduction Act is, we already know is even going to be a 30% contribution to the overall program, and that's one of many incentives and rebates that are available. But you're, you're getting more out of that. You're also now investing and implementing into electric vehicle infrastructure, and those charging stations is there. And lastly, being on the Board of League of Cities as well, we've helped other cities also within this region, doing types of programs which, through the ribbon cutting ceremonies, we'd love to shoot for a Helen Putinum Award, or even a Beacon Award through the institution and the local governments. These are the type of projects they're looking for, and this hits on all levels. I feel like the presentation I wanted to focus more on today really is tailored to the city. I know how it feels to be in a gated city in Southern California. It's, it's a little unique. So what does that roadmap look like? You, if you were to ask Josh, how, how do we move forward with someone like you? Well, that government code allows you to, and we'd love to keep helping you kind of see this vision in a bigger picture. So if, if the city does have an interest and kind of dive a little deeper on what this would look like, what those funder, funding opportunities would be, we can help dot those Is, cross those Ts a little bit more. We'd like to come back and do what a, a microgrid assessment and implemented, implementation plan would look like for this campus, designing what that size would look like, where's it going to be, where are batteries going to be, where, how many EV charging stations are we going to look at, what's maybe some of that critical load infrastructure might be a shared between the association, but again, I think we all have the same goal and plan. How does this campus be as resilient as it can? Within, we'll also do some more funding opportunity assessments and really dive into seeing what the maximum threshold the city can get to put towards this project. And then I look forward to coming back and do another workshop with these stakeholders here to see if maybe this could be a project and fit. Like I said, get you at least grandfathered in for a lot of the seed monies that are available to the local governments to do these projects. So I believe that concludes my presentation for this evening. If you're all holding on to your questions to the last minute, then I'm ready.
I am. I appreciate the fact that this wasn't a blatant sales pitch, but having said that, I mean, how would you participate in moving this forward and how would you be compensated for it?
Yeah, so we're a general contractor. Moving to the next stage is where we are here. We kind of present a letter of authorization to council that kind of has a breakage fee in there. There's no upfront cost to us. We're not billing you for it. It's us coming in saying, we believe that there's a project that can fit here. Let's make it compliant with the government code, and if we can, and there is a cash flow, and it's not an upside down project, then we would see the government agency wanting to move forward to do the project. But if it was in the sole possession of just getting a model together so we can drive a vision and it sits on a bookshelf for the next 10 years, we just look to be compensated for engineering costs. So in this agreement, there is one section that does state how there's no upfront cost, but there would be a breakage fee of what just those engineering costs were to do, or up to the time that we would be terminated to keep moving forward, we would be compensated. But our, our team of engineers are really now fully putting a package and that, that contract to implementation after that. But at this time, like City Manager said, we're out here at risk. We wanted to vet a little bit of, for ourselves to make, see if there, there's first compliant with the government code, and two, you know, would there be enough contribution out here to make the project pencil out? Three years ago-
You know, we're small, so I don't know what, what the future expectation would be for compensation. I don't know what the level of work or the scope of work would be either, so you know, it's-
So we're a general contractor. We get paid for building things. That's a great thing. And we don't do a shared by savings model. We've seen that flop where we were able to save government agencies a million a year for the next 20 years, and they had to write us $500,000 check. I don't think your city would want to do that. So we would put a whole construction package together, progress payments, things like that. We're going to build you this. Today, I'm just kind of giving you the vision, but there's still some vetting that we have to do before we really could say, hey, this is a project we can bring to council that, that we deemed that this could go to a public hearing. We can beat it. We can get the fundings available.
The funding opportunities page, I noticed that you talked, you already talked, talked about the Inflation Reduction Act opportunity. I think we can rule out the disadvantaged communities. Then the domestic manufacturing, what is that?
Yeah, you, you can rule out all those additional bonuses besides just the 30% base. So, um, yeah, so that at max from that one specific incentive would be 30% from the federal government, from the Treasury.
Other questions from council members?
No, go ahead.
We're very bottom line driven. So at the end of this thing, we're going to, obviously, we're going to talk, we've talked before, or whatever that is, we're going to be looking for the best price to get what we need to get. And if it's needed to have the car charging, because that's how it works to get the money and what that is, then whatever. But I know it'd be nice for some of the people who work here to have a car charger, but at the same time, it's going to be bottom line. So we're trying to solve a problem of our generator died. And if generator didn't die, we wouldn't be doing this because it's a lot of money out of a budget that's ridiculously small.
And, and I-
So we're very cold blooded about that, so just so heads up.
Yep. No, I agree, and, and we're here to help those challenges because you're not the only one with a down generator and the local air quality district is pushing you in a difference. So we're here to help resolve that. And when it comes to actually the EV, and I want to touch on that a little bit more, it's actually EV, I want to bring more to the table because of all the seed money and pilot programs available to almost-
If it makes the math better, then we're, we're totally game.
Perfect.
That's-
Well, and Josh, my question is, goes along with the EV charging stations, how integral a part do they play? We have limited space here, number one, and again, for the employees. I know we have a couple of people here that drive EVs that are on staff now, and you know, who may get other ones, so I know that's, that's an important thing. But we do have limited space, number one. I would, and we have lots and lots, probably if you were to take community by community, we probably have one of the highest levels of EVs up here. Every, every third or fourth car is a Tesla. But I think most of the people that live here and have EVs have their charging stations in their in their homes, number one. And I'm not really excited to have a public space that's, a public EV that's out there on everybody's, I realize this is a public facility right here, but I'm personally a little concerned about having charging sta- a charging station and more and more people coming onto our public property here to charge up. So, and staying here for however many hours, they, they might need to be here. So how integral is the EV portion into a, a plan like this?
Great question, and, and it's very minimal. The reason why we start talking about that now in the vision, because if there is an interest for, you know, if we were talking a couple stations and we hear, no, we want six or eight, you're now increasing load. And does your current electrical infrastructure even support that? And now complementing it with this microgrid, with the solar, we want to make sure we're going to be sizing outright. Now, I completely understand, I feel the same way. I don't want everyone and anybody coming into my public area, which they're still accessible. We have come up with strategies. I think the first thing to address your issue is, yes, a lot of houses in here have EV charging, and I'd also say a lot of them even have backup generators, but the ones that don't, and the ones that still got to get down the hill and get to a freeware somewhere, at least again, they remember they can go back to this city campus and know that there was charging station that's backed up by there. Is there enough battery that would be able to use it? Being association, I might, or also with the association, I might be speaking out of turn, but I know we, in our city and association, being the association and the common properties, we have some form of a FOB, a card that gives us access into pools, gyms, things like that. We have done things where if there were charging stations here, that you would have to swipe the POA card for that charging station to even work, which means now the resident who swipes that FOB is the only one that'd be able to get it. You wouldn't benefit from the revenue of just someone driving by to need to charge, which then is on your third part of the strategy. Do you want to? Do you want to only do it for set hours? Do you designate only a couple spots specifically for EV staff? We can worry about a smaller system because they're here longer in the day. So there is slower charging, faster charging. It's nothing that we've determined at this time. It's still, we're at the early stages of, of collaborating and exploring on what makes sense here. Soon, we're going to have mobility vans, bigger vehicles that have bigger charging systems. I don't see that coming here as a play, but that's something we have to plan for in the future.
And I, I appreciate that answer, and I guess we're, for a layperson like me that doesn't really understand a lot of this, if we didn't have in, any EV charging stations at all, if that wasn't something that was considered, do you think something like this is still viable? Or is that such an integral part of it that would start to, as Councilmember Piper said, is that part of what, a big part of what would make this something viable? viable or not?
The EV is minimal. That microgrid, that resiliency, the generation, the demand shift, that's the main project here. I think where I was getting more into the EV and the two areas is one, the funding opportunities, and two, there is California green code. And you are a public area and you have so many X amount of parking spots. They will hit you if we're not state compliant, which we're still years down the road, that did we have enough EV infrastructure? Is there even enough EV infrastructure that's ADA compliant? And that's what my team has the knowledge of, and that's what we're here to plan for. And maybe we don't do infrastructure system or the EV infrastructure now, but if we were to move forward with the solar and the microgrid, at least let's put the futures in. So we're showing, we're planning for it, at least it's somewhere filed within the city and the state showing you're hit, you're addressing SB 100, so you're hitting your renewable generation, and you have your futures for when it comes in needed to address Cal Green Code when it comes to EV chargers. And we will be more than happy to help on all of that.
We need to keep moving here, but council members.
Yeah, I just wanted to underscore the, so for this microgrid assessment implementation plan, you mentioned about engineering costs. Could you give me an idea what that, those costs may be for you to prepare such a plan for our city, just a range?
I, I couldn't, and I, I'm just going to throw one out, don't hold me to this, but I don't see it any more than $15,000 if you would have to pay for that. But again, we're going to put all our resources to make sure a pencil, a project can pencil out before we're committing to any of that. If the city doesn't want to commit to move forward, then we'll hand over our engineering, which then that would be that defined number. But our goal is to make a project work and hopefully build it for you at the end of the day.
Okay. And then in terms of the 30%, like what are we talking about in terms of a range for our city, even as small as it is, to do something? Because 30% of what?
Uh, let's just say the project costs you a million dollars. They're going to give you 30% of that total project cost. They're going to give you back $300,000 from the treasury, straight to the city. And you won't see that till, what we're hearing, because that's why I was saying, we're just starting to see projects in this region get completed. So now they're submitting. And what we're getting back from the treasury is you should be seeing that around the end of year two, a final completion. So final completion and then a year two, that the treasury will provide them the one-time payment back to the city. And you'd be able to use that in all types of funds. We're being strategic in other ways with cities and using different funds or planning for that, to use those funds to make down as certain percentages for more bigger priorities and projects that they have just beyond solar renewables, advanced transportation, things like that.
But this is a, this is a reimbursement process.
Yeah, as an incentive. If, if some of you installed solar at your homes and you might have got a 30% incentive tax credit back from there, same thing that the government agency, but beside, but the government agencies never had a tax appetite before. So the Inflation Reduction Act was really a lot of green, or funding for green projects across the country. We're going to see a bulk of them here in California, and we're going to see a bulk of it through local governments. And we'd love for you guys to take advantage of that as well.
And, and so that'll be already, the application will be, we're not going to get to year two, and they're going to say, oh, whoops, we, we decided not to give you the 30%.
We'll keep modeling. So eventually we'll get to the next workshop and we'll model a full cash flow of what those incentives are. We'll even show debt services were to have to be taken on. And you were to receive that money in year two, and that goes to pay the remaining debt services, what that would look like. So my team will lay out a full scope and cash flow. But the Inflation Reduction Act, that's, that's billions and billions of dollars. So as long as the city can start moving forward, they're going to get the full benefit of it. I will state that after 2025, or January 1st, 2025, those incentives go down dramatically. So we're going, getting closer to state mandates, but the federal incentives are decreasing now. So they're really trying to get motivation now.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Have a wonderful evening.
Me too.
We'll look forward to seeing you.
The next item is to approve the order of the agenda. I would like to move item 13A up to be heard after consent, 8H. That's to get Robert earlier in the agenda.
But do you think the commission item is going to take very long?
Are you suggesting we do it after consent?
Well, it is after the consent. It goes consent commission and then.
Oh, I see. Um, no, I don't.
Because the budget thing could take, and I'm, I'm all for getting Robert home as early as we possibly can. But if that one doesn't, if the commission item doesn't take very long, we only have the one project, maybe we should go ahead.
I think there's a lot of questions on it that I'd like to ask. So I just want to let you know.
On commission item?
Yeah. And I didn't really get.
All right. Well, I, that was my recommendation. Does somebody else have a different one?
No, I'll go with that. She's going to have a lot of questions. I'll go with that.
Okay. So no objection to that?
Yep.
Any other changes? Okay. Do we have to vote on that?
No, it's fine, Mr. Mayor.
So that's what we will do. The next item is blue folder items. There's a couple of.
Motion received and filed?
Okay, second.
All right. There was a request to read something into the minutes. Is that necessary? Or is?
No, it's not legally necessary. It's, it's part of the record of the meeting. Of course, if you would like to exercise your mayoral prerogative to read it, that is up to you.
Read my campaign propaganda?
No.
Okay. So there was a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay. Anamis. All right. Takes us to number seven, public comment on non-agenda items. See none?
I'll just make one super quick, just based off the speaker. Sorry, Rob Ham. The, and only a comment because you all were wonderful in our approving the Tesla roof at our house with the batteries. If you were there, you might still be the only one on that. But I think it's almost the exact same of what they are proposing here. If you're just looking to do a generator and replace your generator, all you have to do is replace it with batteries that are there. It can be charged with the electricity. You can gain all of the exact same savings as far as charging that battery when electricity rates are low. And then, you know, expending it when the electricity rates are high, the app automatically does it for you. It's there. So it is very simple. We've got it at the house. It automatically does it there. So the, just giving you an alternative from the side of, we've seen it work very well residential. I don't know what happens city-wise, if you have to use certain contractors there. But it, we certainly did not spend a million dollars.
I know. You've got a guy. Jeff always have a guy.
Fortunately, we're a city, we have to spend five times what it costs.
A hundred percent that's there. But it, you can, and I'm sure they can do that too. They can simply just add the batteries that are there to resolve the first part on that end. And same with the parking as well, with all the parking that's already happening on the front on that end, having more people parking just to charge their batteries.
Thank you, Rob.
Before Robert or Robert?
Consent. Okay. So that brings us, that was it for public comment, right? Okay. Brings us to a dissent calendar. What is the will of the council?
I would ask to pull 8F as in Franken, 8H briefly.
Would you like to make a motion for the remainder?
I make a motion. We receive and file everything but F and H.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I have to abstain as to the minutes because I was not here for the last meeting. But other than that, yes.
Okay. Do we have to pull that out separately?
No, I think the city clerk can note that, correct?
All right. So we'll go to the.
Yes. And I just pulled this. I mean, it does seem like a reasonable expenditure, given that we want to have, hopefully get a grant to, to do additional fire fuel abatement. My, my issue is that in terms of the way in which it transpired, and I did already address this with the city manager earlier today, but just to make sure that with each expenditure, that especially when there's a contract for services that has to be prepared by our city attorney, that at the very least, there is a direction asked of the council at a prior meeting before the, the contract is prepared and/or expenditure is, is made. So that, because that was part of our, our direction as a, as a general whole to do for these types of, any, these kinds of proposals and any proposal really that involves a contract or some expenditure. So that's all.
Okay. If I understand this correctly, under the, the area that says fiscal impact, it stated the city manager authorized to spend up to $25,000 if there's adequate unencumbered budget in the account against which expenditure, expenditures to be charged. So if that authority already exists with the city manager, are you suggesting that we should change that?
I'm suggesting that what we had discussed earlier and had been proceeding with is that notwithstanding that authorization that we, we did in light of two other issues where there's been with expenditures for a, an ordinance that we ended up not agreeing to, and then for someone to make a presentation, but though that person was charging us $4,500 for that, that we did say, you know, we want there to be a, if there's going to be a contract, don't prepare the contract first. And, but rather come to the council and just get a direction to say, yes, this is the direction we want to go to. And that's all I'm saying. I understand that maybe there wasn't a contract already in existence, but at least a direction could have been asked of the council, hey, I'm going to try to get this done. And are we, can I have your authorization to go ahead and enter into this if I can limit it to a certain amount or whatever?
I understand what you're saying. You're not changing what you're saying, but it's, I see a conflict here. Either we give her the $25,000 approval automatically, or we don't. And, but what you're saying is even if she does have the approval, we should hear it first.
Yeah, that was the, the way in which we had been proceeding, even notwithstanding, because that's been in, in the, in her contract from the beginning. But we've, we've decided, no, please bring it to us because we don't want to.
You need to change this. If you don't want to.
But I agree. I mean, we can change it.
That's what I'm asking. If, if that's, I mean, if that's your position, we can't discuss, I mean, we can't change it now. But I mean, if that's what you, either she's allowed to, to approve up to 25, or she's not, or it's some lower number if we make that decision in the future. But I, I understand what you're asking for, but she, she did what she's authorized to do at this point. So.
Well, all I'm saying is that, that the practice had been different than what was allowable. And, and.
So a time issue associated with this too. There was some, some timing and she's, if I understand it correctly, if we did not approve, if we do not approve this, then we'll have to pay for services rendered up to this point, but can cancel the contract.
I understand. And I'm not suggesting, hopefully they, they get us a grant. But at the same time, I just wanted to go back to what the practice had been, notwithstanding that.
That's going to happen because we've given her the authority. And if she exercises that authority, we've done, there's nothing that we've done to tell her otherwise.
Then I guess we, we should probably set the agenda.
That's fine. We can do that. Okay. With regard to this item right now, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Public comment.
Sorry. Public comment.
Make a motion. We receive and file.
Second.
8 and F.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously.
We have H now.
Oh, is it approved as presented?
Correct. Yeah, it was, it was approved. Yeah, it was, it was approved as, as presented.
I make a motion approved as presented.
Got it.
Second?
Yeah, still second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anamis. All right. Takes us to 8H.
Was that, was that a no?
No, no, I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
As I said before earlier, I'm, I'm inclined to approve this, but I want, but my issue was the methodology. All right. So then with H, this item, again, the way it, it is characterized, we have a contract that we're asked to approve as presented. This contract though, is one that apparently applies for the whole area G, which various cities, including ours, which would encumber us $120,000 per year. I understand that, that this, our portion is supposed to be in the neighborhood of like $794 for years one through three, but we did not get anything from area G that specifically says, this is the formula for your city. And so I wanted the, whatever our, rather than approve as presented, being if we're going to prove, we, we approve only to the extent that it's going to be something that may be no limited, no, no more than $850 because there may be some fluctuation or something and otherwise it comes back to council. That's all.
Bea, I'm sorry. I don't, I didn't underst, I'm listening, but I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the contract, and it's on page 92, indicates that the compensation for area G to, to provide for their, their services is going to be $120,000 per year. And we're asked to approve it as presented. The only reference to the $794 for our portion, at least inferable, it's our portion, is in the staff report. There's no, nothing from the area G coming that says on this contract, each city, like there will be a tab and exhibit, they'll say this city is responsible for this much. And they'll have like a list of, of charges for each city, which apparently there is some type of a chart that I saw from the city attorney, but it was not included. So I just want to make sure that we're not approving $120,000 that we're stuck with if we're approving this as is.
Correct. And so Mr. Mayor, if I may, and of course, Mr. City Clerk, you can interrupt me at, at any time here. So what is before you all tonight is once again, this kind of subset. Last, I believe it was last meeting or two meetings ago, it was the Everbridge Alert System. Staff, in conjunction with staff from area G, looked around and said, all these cities, we all, you know, contract with this, with Everbridge independently. Let's get together. And I believe the cost savings were around 40 to 45%.
Almost 50.
Almost 50%. And as a part of that concept, because area G, its staff members, I believe, one, there is a, basically a program administration cost with, and that is before you all tonight. $794 is based off of the area G annual invoice formula. It's a JPA. So we sign up, JPA. And so this is not unique in that a contract between area G, which is kind of its own separate legal entity, and a vendor would not have the cost of every single city, because for all we know, I'm looking at it, maybe the city of Carson decides this isn't for us. We're not going to, we're not going to participate in this, at which point that cost formula does get a little, you know, could, could slightly change a little bit. So before you tonight, of course, is this idea, if, if it's the will of the council tonight, that you do not want to participate in this, and you think it better that we continue our past practice and kind of do it ourselves and just remove ourselves from this process, that is entirely your prerogative. Or as council member Derringer said, I believe it would be advisable to give us some leeway. We don't want to commit just to 794 because as I said, that could fluctuate slightly. But as you can imagine, 794 out of $120,000 annual cost, that same kind of calculation will, will be reflected even if Gardena or some other city decides not to, not to agree. So.
Okay.
And then public comment.
Yeah.
Public comment.
No other questions from the council?
I make a motion, but.
Okay. All the comment? Bring it back to council.
I make a motion. We approve 8H with a cap of $1,200. That way it gives you plenty of lea room to move around. Right?
Is that, is that reasonable?
I will, I'll defer to Mr. City Clerk.
I would just say before, it's a three-year contract, so the numbers.
Per year, whatever needs to be so reasonable.
So it is already capped, but I, I can't see why that would be a problem. So it's going to be fine.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous. All right. That takes us to 13A.
Robert.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, Robert Samario, Finance Director. So we are here, as you know, every quarter to present to you the revenues and expenditures and how they're doing against budget. And I think you know this without saying, but the budget is your primary, one of your primary responsibilities to make sure that we are managing our finances correctly. So it's important for us to report to you how we're doing.
So this report comes.
First through March 31st, the last time I was here, we reported to the first, first six months or the mid-year report. Every month that goes by, every quarter that goes by, we have more information and a better sense of where we're in this year. And as you know, we're in the budget process now. So it really helps inform the next year budget as well. I'm really going to be just talking about the general fund, but in your report, I provided a pretty. a pretty lengthy narrative analysis of not only the general fund, revenues and expenditures, but also the other funds that we have that are restricted mostly in nature, plus our refuse fund. So starting with revenues, so as I've indicated in the report, this is the first time that I've tried to provide kind of a seasonally adjusted budget to compare against the actuals. In the first six months, for example, I took half the budget for all of our revenues and I compared that to actual revenues, where in this quarter I decided, well, let's just look at where we typically are through March 31st and some of our bigger revenues and key revenues and use that to compare against our actuals. Otherwise, this becomes a little less, a little meaningless to make that comparison. So the three revenues that I've done it for is our property taxes, a big revenue, of course, the property transfer taxes and our building permit fees. All the other revenues you see there and the in the tables that are attached are back to are still at the 75 percent, you know, prorated comparison, because for the most part, they are either realized on a straight line basis or they're very small and not worth going through that exercise. But either way, I think this is a much more meaningful comparison to our actual results for you to look at and for us to discuss. So this chart here is in your packet, but this is all of our revenues in the general fund. Clearly, our biggest revenue are property taxes at $1,004 on the adopted budget side of things. Again, about more than more than half of our budget. And then down below, you can see our second biggest is $475,000, that's the building and other permit revenues. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to go into individual ones that are highlighted and not go into the other ones, but certainly if you have questions as we go through this on any area of the revenue, I can respond to those. I will tell you that based on what we're at today, or March 31st, we are looking at a variance of $58,000 at least through nine months. That's not what we think we're going to end the year at, but just on that seasonally adjusted and prorated budget basis, we have a variance, a positive variance of about $58,000. For the first time on these reports, I am providing you a preliminary year-end estimate, so I've gone through some work to figure out where do we think or where do I think we're going to end the year, and I'll go through that in a moment, but in total.
Column's not on or?
Excuse me?
That column's not, that last column's not on here?
It it is somewhere in your report.
It's on page 174.
But you can see that in total, I I expect that we're going to hit almost $2.9 million by the end of the year. The numbers will change slightly, I'm not saying that's exactly what they're going to be, but if they were to get to that level, we would be looking at a variance from budget of about $165,000. So that's a, that's good news, but just given the nature of our revenues and how stable they generally are, having a variance of $165,000 is is good news. So I'll go through a few of them individually, starting with property taxes since it is our biggest. We have received through March 31st, $860,000. And what I did to kind of make come up with a seasonally adjusted comparison is I looked at how much we'd received in the last two years through March 31st. And and it turns out that the average of that was 59 percent. So in the last two years on average, we've received 59 percent of what we eventually received for the year. So when you extrapolate that, we would come up with about $1,458, which would certainly exceed our budget. Again, that's just based on what's happened in the past. I couldn't tell you that how precise that's going to be, but I think it's going to be relatively close to where we end the year, based on what I've just seen this past month in April. Our property transfers tax, we've talked about this before, we had an adopted budget of 122,000. That was based on a 6 percent growth in the previous year. Through the first nine months, we've only received 29,720. And we talked about this, we sort of anticipated this because of the increase in interest rates that affect home sales, and that's how we generate these revenues through home sales. And there has been a 40 to 50 percent decline in the in last last calendar year in terms of home sales, so we kind of expected this. But in any case, the last two years, we've averaged 73 percent through March 31st. So based on that, I'm projecting we're going to get about $40,000 by the end of the year, 40,713, which is still well below our budget of allotted, you know, should be short of $82,000 or by $82,000 of our budget. So unfortunately.
But the 73 percent, is that the average of the two years?
Yeah, average of the what we collected through March 31st in the last two years, just kind of a way to look at it. And the more data we have, the more we'll be precise in that in sort of that seasonally adjusted number we compare to.
That's probably more variable, though, than the property tax, because the property tax, people pay their bills by April 10th or whatever, and we see whatever percentage.
Well, if you're.
The 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 transfer, that's just when people sell their homes.
Right.
It could be any time during the year.
Yeah, but we typically, it's pretty consistent throughout the year. I mean, in prior years, it's been about $10,000 that came in every year when we got to the 110, 120,000. So whatever that number is, is pretty consistent from year to year. I think that certainly we saw the immediate impact in the first half of the year, but I think it's stable throughout the rest of the year. Then building another permit revenue, again, I seasonally adjusted the budget, but we've received $349,000 through March 31st, and on average, we've received 68 percent of over the last few years. If you just take that that percentage and extrapolate, we would get to $513,000. However, in April, we did receive two fairly large checks totaling $110,000 from the county, and they were from November and December. So we got them in April, but they related to fees that they collected on our behalf back in November, December. I called the county, why is it taking three, four months for us to get our money? And I just this evening got a response back from them with kind of a lengthy response to being saying that that's just how long it's going to take, but they are going to try to provide me some data on January, February, so I can do a better job of coming up with where our budget for next year might, you know, need to be. But based on what we just got in April, I'm thinking we're going to be closer to $600,000 by the end of the year, and that's my year-end projection. And in spite of the fact that if you just do the seasonally adjusted exercise, we'll we'll get to 513. And then investment earnings, our budget is $40,000 for our city investments and about $20,000 for the money we have in our pension trust. And just to give you a sense of sort of scale, the monies that we have invested between CDs and the and LEAF is about 5.3, 5.4 million dollars, which would we expected to generate $40,000 in interest earnings. What we have in the pension trust fund is about $400,000, yet we would expect to receive, generate half of what we would on the 5.3. And that's because of how the investor, we talked about that, they're very aggressive relative to what we can actually invest in. But for the for so far, we have done fairly well in our investments. We've, I expect that we're going to hit $110,000 by the end of the year, well above our $40,000 budget, and that's primarily for two reasons. As you may recall, we've talked about this, we shifted money out of our LEAF, the monies that are held up, invested with the state. The returns there are usually very low and they're slow to react to interest rate changes. So we've, we know interest rates have gone up, so we took advantage of that, moved $750,000 out of that and put them into CDs where interest rates were higher, and that is what's led us to receive, generate more interest earnings this year, and I expect that to continue on to next year.
What was our interest rate expectation when we did the budget, the percentage?
I don't do it based on interest rate because it changes, but we we typically are around 2 percent this, you know, this time, LEAF is lower than that, but we were able to take advantage of 3, 4 percent interest earnings on on our CDs when we made that shift because of the the rapid rise in interest rates. So we capitalized on that sharp increase. They're actually starting to go down now, but at the time, they were really high. So in summary, as I kind of alluded to before, we we are at about $1,800,000 through March 31st and a variance of $58,000. I expect that we're going to achieve 2.9 million by the end of the year, which would put us about $165,000 above our budget. Oh, and by the way, we're, you could see, and as part of the mid-year report, I suspected we would be about $99,000 over budget in total. So just based on what's transpired in three months, we were looking a little better. Any questions on that before I move on to expenditures?
Just to clarify, when you're talking about year-end, you're talking about the end of the fiscal year, so the end of June.
Yes, thank you, fiscal year-end.
When we are finished with the year, could you put a piece of paper together that shows your halfway guess, your three-quarters guess and your final, just so?
By account, by revenue account?
Just when we get to the end, just so we can see how.
Have that available, I'm not sure I know what you mean.
Your your guess here at the last column, could we, when we get the final, put it right next to the final?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
Your half guess was and where this is and that is?
Sure.
Just so we can learn on how variable the variables really are.
Well, I'm doing it in my projections.
How variable the variables are.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, expenditures, this is a summary by department. In your general report, you, just like we do every quarter, you have all the details of every single account within each department, but this is just kind of a good way to give you a sort of a big picture perspective on how we're doing by department. And I've sort of, and I've organized this to separate the things that are transfers out that for the most part are capital-related, so it's hard to kind of analyze the variance there because it just depends on how capital projects, you know, get started and the like. My focus is going to be on what I call the operating budget, which is above that line. It's the City Administrator, Finance, Planning and Development, Public Safety, non-departmental and city properties. But to the far end, you can see that we have, for the most part, favorable variances to varying degrees, and I am going to speak to most of those, but at at this, as of March 31st, we are ahead of the budget or doing better than the budget by about $536,000, meaning that if we, if our year closed on March 31st, we would end up with savings of $536,000. And I'm going to try to explain most of those for you to kind of get a sense of what the, you know, how we got there. So starting with the city manager, City Administrator Department, we have a favorable favorable variance of about $120,000 through March 31st. The the key variances are shown in the slide.
What page of our agenda should I be looking at?
You know, I provided you a copy of the PowerPoint, so you can follow along on the PowerPoint if you like.
All right.
I should have set that at the beginning, I'm sorry. So the key variances.
City attorney fees.
The variance as of March 31st is about $30,000. And the city manager is here, Christian's here, Johnny here is, as we get into these departments and you want to get more into the weeds there, I'll hear as well to answer questions. With the city attorney fees, we we have seen this year fewer complicated projects relative to prior years. The budget this year was based on kind of what's the activity from prior years, so we do expect to see some savings by the end of the year, not not sure to what extent, but certainly at a minimum of $30,000. Consulting fees, you may recall that we had budgeted $62,000 this year for two one-time items. One was for our grant writer, that was for $17,000, and also $45,000 for contract management costs, that's all in preliminarily for our capital work. We have not yet, or we just recently hired the grant writers, so that's why we haven't spent any money there. Our contract management costs are slightly below the 45, you know, what the budget would be, so most of that variance is really coming from the fact that we just hired our grant writer. Records management fees, that was for our digitization of our records under records management. We have started that process, but we have not incurred any costs. By the end of the year, we might, we'll be closer to the budget, but we'll see how that goes. In the finance department, our, the budget of $140,000 includes three major components. It's the financial services contract, that's myself and my staff, the annual audit, which is $18,500, and then the small amount we paid for licensing fees for our accounting system. Through March 31st, the the largest component, they're the financial services component, we are over budget by $34,000 through March 31st. Number of reasons, and I provided this before and also in our my analysis, but the the key reasons are we've, we have had high turnover in the accounts payable function, that was one of the contracted people we had. We have since transitioned that to the city staff because of that, so we're going to see more continuity with that going forward, that's our hope. But when you have turnover, you know, trying to find people who are wanting wanting to work 10 hours a week, it just, there's that training, retraining and training cost that it becomes expensive. And then we did earlier in the year, and even from the prior year, we've been doing a lot of cleaning of financial records. I, you know, just to be frank, what we inherited from the our predecessor were financial records that really needed a lot of attention and work in order to provide you good information, meaningful information. And then all of us are new, not only our contracted staff this past year, but also the city staff are all new, so we've had a sort of a steep learning curve in all of us trying to understand the accounts and the records and how to better track things. And then one of our goals is, I think, is to provide, you know, higher level of quality of service. You know, we are not a fixed fee per month, if you will, like in predecessor. You know, I like to think of us more of a P as a PPO versus an HMO, you know, we provide the level of services that we think are needed in order to make things work and to provide you what you need from a financial perspective. But having said all that, certainly next year's cost will be less because we have not going to have these same issues going forward, you know, the the training and the learning curve and all that. But based on what I think is needed to properly maintain the records and provide you the services that I think you need and what may want, I think the the budget is too low, but that's just my.
Too low for next year?
Too low, to provide, too low in my, in my opinion, yes. And I am a little biased, obviously, but I think really from just trying to be as objective as I can, I think $120,000 for for a complement of three or four people to provide all the financial services is just not reasonable or sustainable. The planning department, their budget is $938,000, fairly large variance there of $284,000. We, just like we saw in the city attorney with city manager's office, that the planning related legal expenses are below budget, well below budget, and just because there are fewer complicated projects, such as the housing element. One of the biggest costs there that we're seeing savings is is just really temporary, that's with the building and planning review contracts that we have with LA County and Willdan. As they are late with us getting us our money on the revenue side, they are also late in invoicing us for their costs, they're all, it's one sort of statement. So they're several months behind, so just like our revenues are are behind, so are our costs. That will eventually sort of resolve itself by the end of the year. And then Willdan, who has received a lot of fees and have permitted them to us, they're still doing a lot of work and they're going to be building us for those services later this year. Stormwater management, we're still kind of trying to figure out that which costs belong which bucket, you know, some of the costs belong in the general fund, some go to the Measure W fund for stormwater-related costs. But at this point, we are seeing a save, some savings that I expect that we're going to see some level at the by the end of the year in the 20 to 30, 10 to 20,000 range, but we'll have to sort that out once we get to the end of the year. Then code enforcement, substantial savings of $45,000. As you know, we've had a gap in services between transitioning from Willdan to Fourleaf, and we also lowered that contract by almost $30,000, so we will see a savings by the end of the year relative to what we have in the budget. And then lastly, non-departmental, this includes the the South Bay Community Organizations, Community Recognition, and the biggest piece is emergency preparedness, that's $221,000. Our actuals through March 31st are are just $76,000. So our variance from that prorated budget is $90,000, and we do expect that we're going to be saving somewhere in the order of $100,000 by the end of the year. The key variances, and the city manager Jane can speak to these in more detail, but the key variances are basic in all categories, the block captains, alert South Bay, REI support, and the Peninsula Expo. And by the way, all these sort of areas, as we think we're going to see by the end of the year, not part of this conversation, but we are working and are factored those into and continuing to factor those into as we bring to you in a few weeks the next year's budget, proposed budget. As we're doing this analysis as part of this third quarter and just the budget analysis, we are seeing opportunities to lower costs even further than what we've talked about before. So recap, we are seeing at this point through March 31st, a savings of $536,000. Some broad analyses, some of those are one-time costs, like I mentioned, record management with digitization that we started late in the fiscal year. One of the things I want to kind of put in, kind of have you start thinking about is most jurisdictions that when they have special one-time projects that are funded, like records management or the grant writer, to the extent they have not spent those by the end of the year, they they will carry those appropriations appropriations over the next year to finish that work, rather than just saying, okay, we're done, since the year is over. Just like with capital, you want to start considering how much of these do we want to carry over if they're important to the next year based on what we expect those costs to be. And then just to be to be honest, you know, some of the budgets are, I think, were just too high, you know, we're, again, we're all in the learning process, trying to develop budgets that are appropriate and and makes sense relative to costs. So every year, I think we are going to get better and better, and we'll see those numbers starting to refine, and a lot of cases start to go down over, starting next year and and moving forward. And then, as I did mention, some of them costs are seasonal, so we'll see that those variances sort of resolve or diminish by the end of the year. If I were going to give you a guesstimate of where we end the year, it's going to probably be in the 3 to 4,000 range. That's just my my guesstimate, not the full $500,000. That's just my, my guesstimate, not the full $500,000. Any questions on the expenditures side before we move on to reserves?
I have another question. Robert, if we were to adopt a, like we've finally done with the capital improvement projects, where we put the money aside, if you don't use it that year, it's still, it still stays with the capital improvement projects and carries forward. If we were to do something like that on the expense side for these types of, like digitization and things like that, when you go to prepare the next year's budget, let's say we carried over $50,000, and you're going to put X amount of money in the budget for next year, but we didn't use all the 50,000, you know, we still have 50,000 left over from this year, is there a way that you can carry that over, like we do the capital improvement thing, so that it's in addition to whatever amount of money we're expecting for revenues and things like, like that? That can be carried over somehow?
There is a mechanism, that mechanism is fairly easy, you're just tracking these things. It's really more about your desire and the policies around the budget that dictate how that works. For some cities, they don't, you know, any carryover of monies have to be built into their adopted budget. It's hard to do that because you don't really know what those, the numbers might be by the end of the year when you're adopting your budget. In most cases, cities will adopt a resolution that gives the City Manager the authority to carry over capital project appropriations that are unspent, as well as special project one-time funding into the next year. And you wouldn't necessarily see it in your budget document, but you would see that as I present to you the first quarter, mid-year reports on the budget, it shows the amended budget reflecting those carryovers and any other amendments that, during that year. Okay, reserves, we, we kind of talked about this before, but I want to just give you a quick snapshot and just kind of just comment on it. So our budgeted use of reserves, that was part of the adopted budget, you may recall, was $700,000. Most of that was for, for one-time stuff, there was a little bit of operational stuff, it was very small, but most of it was one-time. Then during the year, and this, this speaks to your point, we had a carryover from the prior year of a project funded in part by the, by the general fund that we, we added to the budget, so that's the carryover that was added, but that's the use of reserves. And then in this current year through March 31st, you can see there's about 12 or 13 items that were budget amendments that were, for the most part, unexpected, emergency kinds of things that called upon our reserves to pay for, and they're, you can see, except for one item, they're all, they're ongoing. So we had about $911,000 in budget amendments. So with carryovers and amendments and the adopted use of reserves, we are right now budgeting to use a million six, almost a million seven. Clearly, this is going to be offset by any variance we see by the end of this current year. I mentioned $300,000 or $400,000 that we might have as a surplus or savings on the expenditure side that will certainly reduce that number. It's still a significant number. We still have a healthy, though, reserve balance, we have $4.8 million, at least at the end of last year. If we used all those budgeted amounts, we would end up consuming $1.6 million this year in those reserves, that would bring that down to 3.1, almost 3.2 million. Our policy says that we should have $2.2 million in reserves for contingencies, emergencies and the like. So what we technically have over that policy is $949,000. Again, we really have more than that when you factor in what we expect to see at the end of this year. But certainly, you know, it's, it's what we have to spend for capital, because this is what you're looking for, either one-time stuff or capital expenditures, that's kind of the perspective you need to have. You may have a million and five really by the end of this year with a surplus. So, you know, you think about what are the next, what are the capital needs over the next two or three years, it's not, it's substantial, it's more than a few million dollars. Like, you know, the next three years, it could be four, about $5 million. So this kind of gives you some sense of what do we have available to spend for capital. We have those contingency reserves, and they're there for a reason, and do you really, is it appropriate to consume some of those? If you had to for an emergency, you would. For planned kinds of work, that's a different conversation. So something to think about in terms of how we finance our capital projects going forward, because certainly using reserves on a sort of sustained basis is, you know, when you are down to this much, is not really a viable option other than for small stuff. So final comments, again, I mentioned, our goal is to continue to become more precise in the expenditure budgets, and I think we're getting there, and every year we'll get better. We want to make sure that when we present you sort of a recommended budget, that you can rely on that as being a reasonable, as a reasonable numbers based on what we expect to spend in any given year. And we're, we're getting closer to that, but in previous years, I think we've just, we, you know, there's been a lot more wag and wiggle room in those numbers. And as I mentioned, you know, going, as we're, as we are developing next year's budget, we are really trying to refine those numbers. So when we adopt our budget, I really expect it to be structurally balanced, and that's great. I mean, means that our operating revenues are going to be able to cover all of our operating expenditures, and if we're doing a good job on the expenditure side and not so off on revenues, we won't be ending the year with many variances there. And as I mentioned, we're not going to, we can't rely on that mechanism, our surpluses in any given year to fund our capital program, it's just not realistic, because it's just that we're not dealing with big enough dollars. So with that, appreciate your patience and happy to answer your questions.
I have a question.
Yeah, we had a similar discussion several meetings ago, and you were giving us your projections at that time, and I didn't bring all my notes from that conversation that we had at City Council. But are we in a better financial position now with the additional data that you formulated today than we were, that you estimated back then several meetings ago?
Yes. So as part of the media report, I projected that we would end the year about $99,000 ahead of budget, and now I'm suggesting or thinking it's more like $165,000, so we've improved 75,000 or 70,000, whatever that number is, 65,000. So slightly better.
Okay, thank you. On the final comments, you make a comment, says, "Reserves are not adequate to fund large-scale capital improvements." It wasn't that long ago, am I interpreting this to say that we should be having a higher reserve? I mean, we just lowered our reserve level to this lower level. Does this statement mean that we should be having a higher reserve level?
Not at all. No, not at all. I think that the $2.2 million reserve number we've come up with for emergencies or contingencies is great. It's, it's healthy, it's appropriate based on what our exposures are. I'm not suggesting raising that at all, I'm just suggesting that if you wanted to preserve that, then what you have to spend above that is in the order of a million to a million and a half by the end of this year. So that's a million and a half is, is one-time money you have, and it's going to be difficult for you to rely on year-end surpluses every year to, to fund major capital work. You might generate $200,000, $300,000 a year, if you're doing, you know, if we're lucky, we're good. But relative to a $5 million, $6 million capital need over the next several years, it's not going to, you'll, you'll be waiting a long time in order to be able to fund those capital projects.
Like the solar, like the AD improvements?
Yeah, exactly, cap, for the city hall, tennis, tennis courts and all that.
Sure.
Yeah. And plus, there's always emergencies that occur, you know, as we've seen.
So the answer to that, though, is not that you think we should be raising what we want as our reserves, because we used to keep a lot more in reserves, and we're obviously eating through it quite, quite rapidly, the money that we took out of being in our minimum reserves.
Yeah, and if there was a way for us to build up reserves again, they're just, it's just not, it's going to be difficult.
There.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, recommendation is to receive and file. Sorry, public comment?
Yes, please come up.
Hi, my name is Greg Willis, resident, nine Portuguese Bend. I thought it'd be, I was very happy that my, the area that I came to participate in the meeting got moved back, because I'm a public company CFO of a very large finance company, and I just thought I'd share my response to what I just heard. I think there's a couple of things. I would encourage conservatism with your growth in revenue assumptions, especially given what we've seen as a spectacular rise in housing values, and any revenue line item tied to the value of housing, I don't think you can just project it to continue to go up at the rates that they have historically. So I think I would encourage conservatism. I would also encourage you guys to form an investment committee to monitor, to make sure you're earning the right rates on your cash deposits. Our company earns close to 5% on its overnight cash, and that's a huge difference than, say, 2%. And that difference on $2 million could have paid for the removal of the generator, which costs close to $60,000. So I know that we're happy earning 2%, but earning, if you could earn 5% in effectively a risk-free security, an overnight money market fund, I would encourage you guys to do that. And I think an investment committee, if one, if you don't have one, or a financial expert could help you with that, because I think it's, that turns into real money, and frankly, over the last 10 years, it didn't matter because interest rates were zero. But now with SOFR or Fed funds at 5%, we're talking about real money, and that's a way you can help, help, help enhance your budget surplus. Anyway, that's what I like to say.
And I, I appreciate the comments, I think there's a good, one of the learning experiences, I think that probably most of us sitting at this table earn more on our investments, even at risk-free. A lot of us have made a lot of changes in the last few months about what we're investing in personally. It's hard for us here because we are not allowed, we're very restricted in what we can invest in. And this year, we, thanks to our finance manager and the suggestion, we did move out of these life funds that have a much lower level of interest rate, and we did, that, that was a good thing that we did, and I'm not sure that we would have done something like that, as you said, a couple of years ago, or even up until last year. So we, we are looking at that, but I like the suggestion, I know a lot of cities do have investment committees. We're pretty lucky here with the people that sit on the council and work on our budget and finance committee, a lot of them have some experience, but I, I'm making a note here about your suggestion about an investment.
It's just a change that took place in the last six months, so I think, or maybe a year. And the other thing, what I've found is, we have banking relationships with over 60 banks, and unless you're pushing them to give you a better interest rate, they won't give it to you.
And I'd like to comment on that, too, because my, my business, we've gone to overnight investments, FDIC investments, and we're getting 4.5, maybe not 5%, but...
That's good.
Yeah, and I, and I'm thrilled, I look at the interest that we earn every day, and it's like, you got to be kidding, you know, that surplus cash would have been stayed there anyway. And just like you said, our primary bank, which I'm moving away from, just let us keep, you know, building up our, our savings account and never suggesting that, you know, it had some real value to it till I got a pitch from another bank, I thought, this is too good to be true, and it's not. It's really, it's real, and there's a lot of money to be made. Now, as Leah said, I don't know if we have the ability as a municipality to make those kinds of deposits or investments, but I like your idea about the investment committee to, to study something like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Okay. Any other public comment? Back to council?
Make a motion, receive and file.
There's a second? Okay, I'll bear, please say aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. All right, that takes us to... Thank you. 10A, commission items. Zoning case number 22-81, request for approval of a site plan review for a 912-foot swimming pool, spa, two detached garage, three pertinent structures, hardscape, landscape, and four non-exempt grading, conditional use permit for, one, an equestrian riding arena, two, relocation of an existing driveway apron, three, 1,334 square foot reconstructive stable on the same footprint, and variances for, one, structures to encroach into the required setbacks in the front yard, and, two, to exceed the 20% front yard coverage for the driveway in zoning case number 22-81 located at Nine Portuguese Bend Road, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I live too close, so I'm going to go sit over there.
Evening, Aire Wilson, members of City Council. John Signal, the item before you tonight went to the Planning Commission on February 21st, and they conducted the field visit at the property at Nine Portuguese Bend Road. Following that meeting, they did have a, an evening meeting where they discussed it at the evening meeting, made some considerations, some, some comments, and they, they eventually continued that to the following meeting in March where they made a, we brought a resolution back to the Planning Commission for their consideration. But to give you an overview of what's being proposed, the property at Nine Portuguese Bend Road is located on the northern portion of the city of Rolling Hills there, you see on the map. The project's site is zone RES1, one acre minimum. The net lot area is just over an acre, 46,600 square feet. It is a corner lot, so it is between Portuguese Bend Road, which has a 50-foot right-of-way easement, and Lower Blackwater Canyon Road, which has a 30-foot roadway easement. The existing development includes the main residence of about 3800 square feet. It is a developed property, 100% disturbed. It does have a detached garage and a guest house with a detached trellis, a stable, a pool, pool equipment, water features, and other structures there, including storage, sheds, parking pads, and there's three driveways there, two of them that, which connect over to Portuguese Bend Road, to Lower Blackwater Canyon Road, and then a third one on Lower Blackwater Canyon Road for the stable. In terms of the project description, originally, when the applicant, applicant came to the city to submit the application, there wasn't a mixed-use structure there. It was a chicken coop, or actually detached garage with a chicken coop attached to that. And that's one of the changes that Planning Commission had made to the project, I'll, I'll get to that a little bit later, because it did partially encroach into the side and front yard setback. The project also included a reconstruction of the stable on the same existing footprint. They also added a loft area and increased the height, and another change there that the Planning Commission made, which I'll get to later. There's also a new 912-square-foot pool to, to replace the existing pool, a new 3,650 square-foot equestrian riding area, which partially encroaches into the side yard setback, and a 26-foot-wide reconfigured primary driveway, which would relocate the existing driveway and apron. And so that's what they came to us originally when they first submitted the project. There were other items that were associated, that were part of the project, that would typically be approved administratively, but require discretionary review because of the location, either the size or location within the setback, and that includes features such as new fountains, water features, three-foot-high maximum retaining walls, patio, a fire pit, and a reconfigured pool deck. There are items not subject to discretionary review that we could have approved administratively, and that includes the interior and exterior remodels of the buildings. They are proposing an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, and that, under state law, is not subject to discretionary review. They wanted to reconfigure some of the hardscape and landscaping on the site and remove the existing walkways and sheds, and they also had some garden walls that are three feet in height or less. The request includes a site plan review, and that's because they do have a swimming pool that's eight, more than 800 square feet, it's 912 square feet total. There's also a detached garage and a pertinent structures, hardscape, landscaping, and also non-exempt grading, that's all subject to the site planner view. In terms of the conditional use permit, they have a equestrian riding arena on the north side of the property that requires a CUP. They're looking to relocate the driveway apron, which was reviewed by the Traffic Commission and approved, and so that was actually reviewed by our traffic engineer as well in terms of the location. And the CUP is required also for reconstruction of the stable on the same footprint. They're requesting variances to encroach into the setbacks, and I'll show you a diagram of that later on. There's also a variance for the 20% exceedance of the driveway in the front yard. So this is a site plan that was submitted, you should have a copy of it in your file. Portuguese Bend Road is located on the Bonham portion of that, and Blackwater Canyon Road is located on the right-hand side there. North is facing right on, on that property. And so on this map here, the red there shows the property line, which actually goes into Portuguese Bend Road by 50 feet, and also Blackwater Canyon Road by about 30 feet.
And John, does the acre include the, the area you just shaded?
No. It's actually larger than that. The, so the gross is...
That's not shaded. That's the 1.07 acre.
Right. Correct. Yeah. So the gross is a lot larger because it includes roadway easement. But when you subtract out the roadway easement, it comes out to just over an acre. So the area there in blue, the grayed out area is the street there. The area in blue is your front yard setback along Portuguese Bend Road. The area yellow is the side yard setback, which is 10 feet. And there's a portion, the other ones are all side yard setbacks, except for that, the top portion there, which is the rear yard setback of 50 feet. That's in the red. So again, it is 100% disturbed. There is a lot of development on the property that's existing. Those are your setback areas, so they're entitled to build outside of those setback areas. The riding ring is shown there on the right-hand side of that along Blackwater Canyon Road. And the other developments are shown there as well. The bottom portion there, the gray, is their proposed driveway. As you can see, at the very bottom right corner, they are looking to relocate the existing driveway. Right now, it's currently at the corner, Blackwater Canyon Road and Portuguese Bend Road. So they're looking to shift that up onto Blackwater Canyon Road. And as reviewed by our traffic engineer, that's a safer location because it is pushing the driveway apron further away from the intersection. The original project also included the chicken coop, which you see right over there. Let's see. That's working. But it's shown on the, the left-hand side there, which is in the easement. And so the planning commission had removed their, that chicken coop in that decision. So again, on the left-hand side is where their planning commission said, you know, it's not a good location because it is in the roadway, the RHCA easement there. They also required that there be landscaping planted along the driveway, the very south on Portuguese Bend Road, or the very bottom of the plan there. They wanted to see two feet of landscaping. So instead of a 26-foot-wide driveway, you have a 24-foot-wide driveway. And the other part was with the stable shown in there in the red. And the footprint will remain the same. The commission had conditions on there that limited the height of the loft area and changed around the architecture to meet the, our code requirements. And to summarize, again, the changes that the commission had proposed, it was really dealing with the chicken coop, that they removed those from the plans. The driveway, the driveway width, that they reduced that from 26 feet to 24 feet, and that they provide some landscaping along the Portuguese Bend side. As far as the plans, they also, they had the riding ring that was moved two feet off the fence line to allow for future screening. And the stable was redesigned to comply with HOA, RHCA requirements, nine-foot plate height at the lower level, seven-foot plate height at the loft, and operable shutters at the windows. The proposed stable is 1,334 square feet, and it has a, the loft area is 765 square feet. So the total proposed stable will be 2,099 square feet. The loft will be used for general storage instead of the hay storage as originally proposed. And another change to the plans that the applicant made was that the parking for the ADU was removed and replaced with a storage bin on the same location. So those are changes made after it went to the planning commission the first time. It went back to the planning commission on March 21st, along with the resolution, and the planning commission voted 4-0. There was one commissioner that abstained due to proximity. That was Commissioner Cardenas. But the planning commission did approve zoning case number 22-81, and they adopted resolution number 2023-02 approving the project. The project was found to be categorically exempt under Section 15303, the CEQA guidelines. It's for new construction or conversion of small structures. And that concludes our presentation. Our recommendation is that the city council receive and file the planning commission's decision approving the project.
Thank you, John. Okay. Questions from council members?
Yeah. I just, one of the things, I mean, this is, in terms of proposals that we've looked at, I think this has the highest number of variances where, where there's requested variances to encroach in setbacks and significant encroachments. I mean, you're talking 15 feet, 29 feet, 27 feet, 37 feet, 40 feet. And everything is double-digit except for one encroachment. So I'm, you know, in terms of making the, the findings that we're required to make, there's gotta be something that would indicate a need to go into a setback when there is other areas that it could be used for. Or there's, what I saw from the, that was mentioned in the report, it indicated something to the effect like, well, there's already something there, so this would be needed in order to put the other things that the applicant is requesting, they would need to go into the setback. And I never have seen that that be a justification in, in terms of other projects. So I'm inquiring about that, and also about the fact that under our code, and I verified this with, you, Mr. Signo, in discussing it, that my, my recollection is correct, that under code, and you gave me the code section, Section 17.16.160, that driveways, there's only one driveway permitted, except as, an exception under 17.16.040, which allows for a driveway that leads exclusively to the stable. So there are three driveways that, at least on this map, that are, are being proposed. And the one that basically takes up the, most of the setback area on Portuguese Bend Road is wider than, than a lot of other driveways. So that would be an additional driveway. The other one that comes straight in, into the area where the cars would park, into the motor port, is, is fine. It's just the one that, that is, that is 20, now 24, from 26 to 24 feet, which would be a, a third driveway. So I don't, I'm trying to ask for explanations, you know, which I indicated to try to find out, because we, we have to find rulings that we're not favoring one applicant over others who would ask for similar concessions. And so, to the extent that we have residents that might look at this and go, well, I'd like to build in my setbacks. And so...
Getting a lot of comments, but I'm waiting for a question.
No, no. My, my question is, like, how do we resolve, this isn't, we don't have a variance set up for an additional driveway. It's just something that you don't, you don't get another driveway. You only get one primary driveway for your cars, and then you get a second driveway that I understand is not supposed to be improved. It's gotta, it's gotta be permeable surface to go straight to the, to the stable.
I believe there's two existing driveways already. Isn't that...
Yeah, there's actually three. There's a third drive.
There's three existing right now. So they're not asking for more than what's already existing. Did you understand that?
Well, I did understand that there's been, it doesn't seem to me, because I asked Mr. Signo, so when were these driveways constructed? And there was no knowledge about that because the driveways don't require a permit.
That's correct. So according to the assessor's record, the home was built in 1936. I went back and I went up to the building permits, and there was some work done in 1960s, you know, extensive work done. The last time I went to planning commission for approval was back in, I think, 2011. So that was, you know, a little more than a decade ago. But again, the site is, is completely developed. It's 100% disturbed. The driveways, from what we can tell from the existing areas going back about 20 years, is that they, they've always had those three driveways there. When we took this to the traffic commission, they're actually taking one of the existing driveways and moving it away, further away from that intersection, making it a better situation, because it's, it's safer being, you know, further away from the, that intersection. But there has been three driveways on there. You are correct. I mean, we don't give permits, or the building department doesn't give permits for, for driveways. It's basically, I guess, pavement on, on grade. But looking at the aerials, I mean, those driveways have been there for at least 20-plus years.
And, and all I'm saying is that if we have other people in the community that want to do the same thing, I mean, what is our answer? We have a rule. And if we're going, if we're being asked to, for a variance, which we do have discretion over, and there would be additional room, if there's not a 24-foot driveway that spans the entire, almost the entire length of Portuguese Bend Road of that side of the property, then, then that's, that's my concern, because I don't want to be creating a situation where people look at that and say that I want what, what the, the people at Nine Portuguese Bend got. And, and we now don't have any rules left.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna bring it back for discussion, but can...
No, I just want to ask...
Yeah. And, and so, yeah, correct. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in here. So there's, and Councilmember Derringer, I will, I will get to your, your question. I do want to kind of tee it up for this item before you right now. You all do, it's not here before you tonight for you to make all of the explicit findings. Rather, all this, the item is, is whether or not you want to initiate review or not. That is it. So there's no need to say, hey, if we just receive and file, that means we've affirmatively made all the findings. No, no, no. That's not what it is. That, that's, you know, the arena for the planning commission, unless, of course, you all exercise your right as the city council to bring it up, at which point it will be a full-fledged public hearing. And then, yes, those very findings that you see in your agenda packet today, staff will make a presentation, and you all will have to weigh the evidence, should you so choose. Councilmember Derringer, going back to your, and if I put words in your mouth, you can interrupt me, this idea of precedence. That, that's what I think you're getting, probably because you're an attorney. So I, I totally get that. The one thing that I will say, it's probably, it's not really identical to that, say, like a, like a, you know, the Court of Appeals or the U.S. Supreme Court that's bound by precedents. This, it's all on a case-by-case basis. Planning commissions change, city councils change, projects change. And so there's nothing that, should the planning commission change over in a year, 18 months, so be it. Of course, an applicant, of course, they're gonna maybe use this project as an example to say, hey, due to equity and fairness, I think I should get this, this exact same treatment. However, in my opinion, it is unlike, say, the Supreme Court, or the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, or the California Court of Appeals, where they're not bound by precedent. Each individual body has to review the facts of the case and then apply those, excuse me, those facts to whatever required findings are required in the municipal code. Probably a little bit verbose on my part, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. I will say, though, that once again, before you again tonight is just the decision whether or not to bring it back. And so I would, and once again, these questions are all astute. Councilmember Derringer, those are totally fine. I would caution you three, though, to refrain from making any statements on the actual project, like, how could we, there's no way you could have made this finding. I won't make this finding because that's not before you right now. If the, if the idea is to get it before you and to review it, it takes, it will take all three of you. It will take a unanimous vote. Excuse me?
Four.
He's recused, yeah. And so, and so...
What would take a unanimous vote?
The, the, the decision to bring it back. The municipal code is clear. It requires an affirmative vote of three members of the city council. That's what it says. So I know a bit unique, typically...
It's a big jurisdiction.
Correct. Typically, when we have three, a two-to-one vote typically does, does carry the day. This is a unique instance. And once again, that's, I can read you all the, the plain text of, of the municipal code.
But a, a mixed vote, a two-to-one vote could receive and file?
Correct. And so, to be honest with you, there's not really even a legal necessity to receive and file. And so if, if it were split, if it were two-to-one, to, I would, two-to-one, bring it back, one vote to receive and file, my advice would, you know, my guidance here would say, it's simply received and filed. Three members did not vote to, to, to bring it back, and that is what's required from the...
The action would be that we would need, if I'm understanding, just make sure that my little brain is wrapped around this, that to do anything other than accept the planning commission's resolution...
Right.
Requires an action on our part to take it under our jurisdiction.
Correct.
That would require the three votes.
Correct.
I understand. Okay.
Well, I did have a legal question that was not answered. And, and mine is that, as I see it, because the variances are different, the variances that are being requested are whether a building can be in, in the setbacks. But this code section about only one driveway for cars and, and then an exception for a driveway that leads straight to the stable, that was not addressed by the planning commission. And that's not subject to a variance. It's just either you have it or you don't. And that's why I'm asking, because this, to approve this, even a receive and file, would mean that we are, in effect, violating that code section.
I, I'm not sure that I would articulate it as violating that code section. Similarly, I am a bit reluctant to get into the specific detail of justifications, and that's only because I was not there at the planning commission, nor, more importantly, do I know, I can't get into the minds of the planning commission. The, the formal action of the planning commission is before you all tonight. If you all are unconvinced that that, excuse me, I shouldn't say that. If you all review that record and think it wise to bring it up, that is entirely your, your prerogative. Conversations about the substance, legal opinions about what, what the planning commission did or did not do, in my opinion, simply aren't properly displayed at this stage of the process. If you want to bring it back, myself and John will work together, not work together, but, but fully, you know, flesh any of these issues out, and it will be a de novo hearing before you all, in terms of you're not bound by the planning commission. And you all, and you three, assuming Councilman Piper is still recused, unless he moves, then you guys would all be, you know, would totally be able to, to make that call. So I know that's probably not the most satisfying answer, but the only reason for that is that we're, we're, we're not there yet. If you have concerns, you definitely know what your, your council prerogative is. And if, if, if your colleagues share your, those concerns, I encourage you all to exercise that.
And just to receive and file, though, in effect, isn't that essentially indicate, an indication from the council that we receive what they did as acceptable? And, and I agree that it should be filed, because we know that that's, that's going to be the end. There wouldn't be any change to that decision.
Yeah. I mean, correct. You, you are, you are accurate that, that should you all receive and file, then it's final. Then the only other remedy to someone who potentially wanted to challenge it would be court. I would, I would compare it, though, to say, going back to these legal comparisons, and I apologize if I'm losing everyone, the same way that the Supreme Court doesn't take up, you know, cert of, of every single case, that doesn't necessarily mean that if they heard every, all of those cases, they would agree. They simply just don't think it is not proper, but in exercising their discretion, they've just decided, some cases they will bring up, in some cases they won't. And in my opinion, that's not necessarily an unequivocal, we would have made the exact same decision, but it's rather just a, we understand the, the decision of the lower body, and we are comfortable letting it stand. In my opinion, maybe that's a distinction without a difference, but I, I do see it different.
Let's move forward. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I would like to disclose that I was at the site visit and on the Zoom of the planning commission meeting. And so...
And I was not at the site visit, but I was also on the Zoom meeting as well. Okay. Public comment?
Greg Willis, living in Nine Portuguese Bend. Thank you for hearing me. With regards to the driveways, as, as you all know, the house is one of the oldest houses up here. It came with three driveways when we purchased, purchased it. Again, as John, Mr. Signo mentioned, we moved it off the corner for safety purposes. And then the width of the driveway, just for your benefit, was to allow fire vehicles to come in and out. The location of the driveway was pushed, I mean, to give as much space between the arena that's going in there, because I'm an avid horseman. I'm a member of the Board of Caballeros, Vice President. Here, joined by Mr. Hammond, who's also the President of Caballeros. So we wanted to move the cars as far away from the horses for safety reasons, and then also to make the driveway wide enough to allow safety vehicles through. That, that was the reasoning behind all of that, just so, for your knowledge. But we're not adding any new driveways. We're just moving, we moved the location of the entrance off the corner for safety. And then we rerouted it to permit away from the horses, as well as to give way to an ADU that's going on the property.
Yeah. And I didn't understand that from, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, wait. This is public comment. Okay. Wait, 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 this is public comment. Okay, Gavin, anything else to...
No, that's, that's all I have, and thank you for taking the time and, and listening to us, listening to my views about my project.
But would you take a question from Councilmember Derringer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So, in terms of the, the driveway that exists, you know, that, that basically goes straight alongside Portuguese, Portuguese Bend Road on, on your property. In terms of that, I mean, some of the areas could be used for other things, like the riding ring could be pushed down closer to Portuguese Bend Road if that driveway wasn't there, that sort of thing. So, I'm just asking, in terms of, of reconfiguring things, and I understand that we have people who buy homes sometimes that they're unpermitted structures, and, or there's things that are not, that haven't been approved prior to. All I'm asking is, in terms of that, was there any discussion about perhaps changing that around so that everything would be legal, as far as the, the driveway is concerned, having the, the two driveways instead of three, and then, and then push, some of the things pushed out of the, out of the setbacks?
I, I want to be careful about referring to something as a little...
And, and so, I, I must just reiterate that this is getting very much into what I consider the, the merits of the project. And so, you know, I guess we have the property owner slash applicant here. I, you know, I want to be, be sure to you that you understand that this is not the, would be the hearing on, on your project, so I, I'm going to be frank with you. If you do not want to answer that question, I don't think that you, that, that you have to, and that subsequently, should the three members up here decide to, to take it back, you will get the full hearing before you, so I don't want you to think that this is kind of what you are getting. I hope you, I, I just want to make sure that you understand that, that, that concept.
Yeah, I, I was, thank you very much for the clarification. I, I mean, to me, I don't like the reference that something on my property or the project is illegal. We went through a process to achieve variances for various reasons, that we spent lots of time with the Planning Commission. I think it was a two-month process, and frankly, I would have liked it to have been one month, but we, we walked through the, the commissioners, we took their comments back, we, we considered lots of different things. And ultimately, I think we all were very happy with the solutions that we came to, and maybe I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there another public comment?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the council. Is there further discussion on this?
Yeah. Bea, are you going to make a motion to take it under our jurisdiction?
Well, I'm, I...
No.
I, yes, I am. I would like to do that, just only because I would like to further understand this, and apparently, I'm not able to, except by taking it under submission.
Okay, so there's a motion to take it under consideration of the council. Is there a second? Motion fails due to a second. Is there another motion?
I would make a motion to receive and file.
All second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would be opposed, because I want to take it under submission, but, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
And...
No, thank you very much for...
No, no one's accusing me of having illegal, I'm just saying, as a lawyer, I just want to look and, and find out more information about it.
Fair enough. I just do finance, so when I hear you like it...
See, no harm intended.
You got to learn more tonight, Greg. See all the time I've spent.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate all your help.
Okay, uh, public hearings, we have none. Old Business Nine, New Business, we've already done thirteen A, hour thirteen B, considering approved amended City Manager employment contract.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and take this one. Item before you tonight is, of course, the consideration and approval of Madam City Manager's Employment Contract Amendment with the city. Throughout the late 2000, last year and early this year, the City Council conducted Madam City Manager Performance Evaluation. As has been the typical practice, after said performance evaluation, certain terms of the employment contract are proposed to be amended. In this case, specifically, a salary increase of 5% to the amount as stated in the amendment and staff report of 239,328 pursuant to the Government Code. This constitutes the oral summary of the changes, and all other provisions of City Manager Zhang's employment contract remain unchanged. This concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, I'm, of course, available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for...
One's here, but, public comment, sorry.
Good public comment.
Got it.
I just, I just have a question. Does this require the, I mean, there's, oh, there's four of us now. Never mind.
I make a motion, we approve as recommended.
Second.
And, and I'd like discussion. First of all, I mean, I, I was not at the last meeting. I apologize to everyone for that. I think that's one of three meetings that I have missed in my two years on council. But I would say that with respect to this particular item, I am going to be opposing it, you know, for the following reasons. One is, you know, we're in a budget deficit, and, and we have, in the past, given our city manager raises each year before the, the deficit appeared. And in addition, this particular proposal would be 5%, but it's, but it's effective April 1st, which would mean that the 3.5 COLA that comes would effectively make it an 8.5% raise. So, I understand that, that COLA is in the contract for all the employees. I'm, I'm not criticizing that, but I think it is something in terms of a budget deficit, we should be considering as far as an increase in salary at this time. And then the second thing, and I, and not going to elaborate, but I've already mentioned the issues in my performance evaluation, so that would be another reason to oppose.
Okay. You have a discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
Motion to passes? Writer for City Council. I, not sure, but I suspect that all council members and even the city staff received a certified letter from Jim Partridge. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, there's, he's addressed several items in his letter. There's a couple of different message strings. Some of it, I believe the city has jurisdiction over, some of it, I believe the city does not, it would be association matters, but I was hoping we could go through this and identify which matters we can respond to, and I was hoping our city manager would help, help us through that. Is that something we can talk about right now? Just, not to discuss the merits, but to determine what, what, which of these items we can, we can address.
Correct. So, I, I did peruse Mr. Partridge's letter as well. I believe that got sent out or in the, somewhere. You know, th- that's fine, of course, you know, as the mayor, you can go through them. I, I would hesitate a little bit to say, yes, unequivocally, it's our jurisdiction, no, just with the understanding that we may not know off the top of our head. I think it's clear that if the, if it's the direction of council, that this letter is important, or not important, all, all letters from residents important, but, but you would like to see a response to the issues that we, that we do have.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of activity going on in the Flying Triangle area right now, and some of it's timely, and some of it's, is concerns are relevant. The association is going to do some roadwork that might change the grading, or not, it'll change the grading, but it might change the, the water flow. And there's, we've already had some drain issues down there with the, I'm not sure what the Gadarzi address is, but there were some issues where a drain was blocked, and then it was unblocked, and it's just, there's a, it's a cauldron of issues down there right now. Not necessarily affected me personally, but several of the, the residents in the area are, are being affected by activities that are, that are going on.
Mayor Wilson, may I make a suggestion? I think that, I think Pat is prudent to say, maybe some of the issues that come up require city staff to do some research. So, with respect to tonight, if you could identify areas in which the council thinks that there may be some city role in it, we can follow up on that, circle back with the City Council to determine definitively, one way or another, whether the city has a role in that issue. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, one of them, I guess I can talk about this, even though I'm recused from the item, if it comes before the council, but there's a, the very, well, after the cover page, there's a reference to Dr. Shen's anticipated home construction and a request to maintain the stormwater drainage details in the present state. Certainly, that's going to require some research, because I, I don't know exactly what he means by that, unfortunately, but, but that's, that's something, he makes a reference, this is Mr. Partridge, he makes a reference to historical storm drain or stormwater flow. So, that's one. That's the first email string, it's a one-pager. Again, the second one refers to Dr. Shen's project. He's, he's asked, this is where I'm not 100% sure which way, or whose jurisdiction this falls under, but he's asking about a alternate fire escape route. I know this has come up many times, he ended, south end of Portuguese Bend Road. There is a fence and a gate that prevents public access, and it looks like Mr. Partridge is suggesting, at least, that that should be open to, as an emergency access route. And I'm going through this really quick here, so... And the next one... Oh, he's talking about hooking up to a sewer line. This is something that's definitely going to require some, some research. I kind of know the area. I don't know that there is act, an actual sewer hookup anywhere, and, and he seems to be, he might be co-mingling sewer and storm drain infrastructure, so that's, that's one thing. And then, he talks about the pending work that the association's going to be doing. Right at the start of the slide, there's a, as you drive down Portuguese Bend Road, there's kind of a relatively sharp drop-off. I think it's kind of interesting. I've lived with it for over 25 years now, and I didn't find any problem with it, but other people have found a problem. But anyway, how that is going to affect, again, water or stormwater runoff. And then he's got a complaint about survey markers. I, I don't know how to help him on that one. It looks like somebody has interfered with survey markers. Let's see, this was sent to Kristin and Christian. So, without getting into details on that, you already have a copy of that, that request, or that I can stack, I guess, complaint. Okay.
And on that same issue, Pat and I did not talk about this. My concern on this and the things that we want to look at, the Women's Club Neighborhood Meeting on the fourth, I believe it is, which you've all been notified of, so that, you know, you can attend, happens to be in that area. And these questions are going to be coming up. We're going to be sitting there as representatives of the city, and I'd kind of like to know what, what we can, what we should say, can't say, would be be, you know, how, how we can best say something in that type of an environment that doesn't get us into trouble in this, in that, in that area. I know we all tread very lightly there, but that's not to say that they don't have issues, and like Pat, it may not affect me personally, but it certainly affects the people that live in that area. And I, I just want to be able to, be able to facilitate the discussion that's going to happen at that meeting as best we can. So, whatever we can find out before we have that meeting...
Yeah, it'd be very helpful. It's a lot better to be able to tell a resident something instead of, we'll get back to you, which never happens.
Or even if, yeah, whatever our, a, a correct response would be, Pat, if you could help us and align with that, so that we know, you might say the right thing, but one of us might go, oh, no, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone other than myself on that.
By the way, this is me on May 4th, it's not widely known, but in case you were not planning on coming, my, coming, my band will be providing entertainment. By whom?
The Women's Club. Don't, I didn't do it.
Uh, the latest I saw was, that was not the case, so...
Okay, well, this was like last Thursday or something, or Wednesday. So, she went back, good.
They might have heard Ty sing, so...
They didn't want to set the press, the, the Women's Club said they, this was not me, I had nothing to do with it, I just heard this, that they didn't want this to set a precedent. I already, I already said they're setting a precedent to have dinner, and, but we listened to that.
Okay.
Mayor Wilson, I just want to kind of outline the five things you mentioned about the letter that you'd like us to look into. First is the historical storm drain flow on Shen's property. Second is Shen's property ultimate for fire escape route. Third is hookup to sewer line. Four is pending work by R H C A at the start of the Flying Triangle, where there's the drop-off in the road.
It's at Ranchero's, the cross...
Ranchero, okay.
Isn't that the one that they're going to be shaving, shaving down?
And lastly, lastly, the moved survey markers.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly where they're for, but comment on where they went or how they moved.
Well, that was a general comment to, response to his, his, if you look at, if you look at the, the contents of his letter, that's the same order that, that's how it was, they were ordered in my envelope. I don't know if that's the same order as everybody else, but you can, you can refer, some of those were two or three pages long, you can refer to that.
Sure.
Those are the general headings, but you can find more details in each one of his, his email strings.
Sure.
Okay.
But, okay.
The second thing I have is to see if anybody's ever heard of AB 233.
I don't know the number, but if you can tell me what it is, I can tell you.
Well, this is introduced by Assemblymember Wilson, hopefully no relation. But it basically says, "Local government, streets and sidewalks, disposal of horse excrement. Existing law generally regulates the governance of local agencies and defines a local agency to mean a county, city, or city and county. This bill would authorize a local agency to require the rider of, or person otherwise responsible for, a horse to collect and dispose of any horse excrement deposited by that horse on a street or sidewalk." Now, this hasn't got very far in the assembly. It was introduced and amended. I can tell you, one other, one city has expressed their objection to this bill, and that's the city of Norco, which I actually used to live in, Horstown, USA, by, by their moniker. But, anyway, I bring this to your attention, not to act, but just to advise you. I don't think this is really going to affect us, because first of all, it authorizes the agency to enact regulations. I'm surprised we couldn't already do it if we wanted to. But it also refers to streets and sidewalks, and, you know, I think the sidewalks are pretty limited here. The streets, I don't, you know, it doesn't, it does, it's kind of, well, it is silent on this subject of private streets. It doesn't say public. I don't think it said that anywhere, but I don't think it's going to affect us, but I just thought I'd bring it up, because there's not a lot of communities that have, not that we have that many horses anymore, but we have a lot more than most cities, I would say, at least on a percentage. So, in case it goes somewhere in the future, you'll have knowledge of this.
We do have one resident every, twice a year, who reaches out to me that we should be having horses where little poop bags under them, like the mountain police in New York and things like that, so...
Okay. Well, consider yourself a...
Adviser.
Adviser, yes, thank you. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else?
All right. So, each of you got a one-page email from our city manager in response to a conversation that we had today, where Simpily asked why it is that, that none of the city credit card bills had been appearing on our check registers for the last several City Council meetings. And so, Simpily was asking about that, and, and her response, you know, she indicated, well, that would mean that there's no credit card charges. I, if we pay the bills, we'll always be in the check register, and if we pay the credit card bills, and then... always be in the check register, and if we pay the credit card bills, and then we wouldn't be trying to carve that out. And I said, okay, fine, well, if you could just look it up, the the, because normally if you have a credit card, this is the way my credit card works, if there's no bills for that month, they'll say no charges, and you'll have a bill that basically says no charges, and she said she would do it. So there was no allegations, as indicated here, that I was accusing anybody of fraud, I simply asked why, because they had been regularly in our bills each month, and not every single council meeting, but generally every other council meeting, and I hadn't seen it in several months, so in any event, I just wanted to clarify that based on this, the representations that were made in the, in the, this piece of paper that was placed on our, and I guess it was sent, I haven't checked my emails.
Okay, thank you, anybody else?
I mean, I hate to even weigh in on this, but I can't help myself. Sometimes, and I know I I do this all the time, and I get talked to about it, my tone or my intention doesn't come across the way I meant it to. Just like a resident today, I don't think you were implying that they were doing anything illegal on their property, but didn't like hearing that he was being, and I think he used the word accused, of having illegal things on his property. I think it's just really difficult sometimes, and we all need to be careful when we're pushing back on something, and I'm trying to be careful now, because I'm pushing back a little bit, to say it in a way that it can't be interpreted in that, in that way, because sometimes something can come across differently than you or I or someone might, the speaker might have intended it to come across. Because I think we've all asked the city manager for things before, and don't get that, you know, haven't had that kind of a response, so maybe something was said in a tone or something that made it seem that way, so I think we just all should respect the, we all should respect each other.
I definitely agree with respect, and and I try to be respectful, and no accusations were made, I simply said, hey, can you just check into it, and she said she would, to check with the, and then it turns out there were, in fact, some bills from January, February, and March that were not in the registers. So all I'm saying is that, I was like, okay, fine, you know, check with and get back with me, there was no accusation. So I just wanted to clarify that, because this is my only opportunity to respond, because the Brown Act, that things are being put out, and then I'm unable to respond to items that, if they if they may come up before council meetings, but so I'm needing some legal advice on things like that, because I do think it's important to provide a response, because I don't accuse anybody of like hiding the ball, I'm just saying, I just usually have seen these bills, I don't see them anymore, and it's been months, and turns out that's because they weren't in there, and they they had, do exist, so that's, that's all, we'll get them later, and that's good, but I I just, I just wanted to provide the information based on what was written here.
Okay, well, you had your opportunity to discuss it, so.
Yeah.
I know that's been a problem in the past, all right, anybody else, council? Okay, we'll move to matters from the staff.
Mayor Wilson, I just want to make an announcement about April 30th, Sunday, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., the block camps are putting on an event for the entire community, there will be food, in fact, a taco station has been hired this evening, and we are also going to have drinks, welcome the entire community to come down. The guest speaker is Chief, Assistant Chief Brian Bennett from the Fire Department. As you're aware, that legislation changed some of the defensible space requirements, and so the Fire Department is the enforcer of that fire code, and the lessons, legislation changes, the Fire Department wants to get the community of Rolling Hills ready for the upcoming inspection, and of note is that the Fire Department is changing what we normally call the brush clearance inspection to defensible space inspection going forward. So Brian Bennett will be at the event, and he will conduct a Q and A, he'll also bring some forestry staff, as I understand it, that evening, to answer any questions the community may have.
Forest three?
Forestry, forestry division, yep, that's all I have.
That's a Sunday night?
That is a Sunday night.
Four to six or something?
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, um, let's.
We had a longtime resident, Marge Schmidt, who lived here for years and years and years, she's, maybe four years ago or so, moved to New Mexico. Her daughter, Diana Nuchan, still lives in the city, anyway, she passed away, and so I was wondering if we might be able to adjourn the meeting in her memory?
Of course. Hold up a minute, show that, please.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that takes us to the end of the agenda, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.